We're not allowed to say numbers in this.
Yeah.
And you don't like the wheels, too, right?
I don't because I find myself like I fidget and I act.
Is Chief McGee coming?
No.
Oh, okay.
He's actually going to be.
He doesn't need to.
Yeah.
Yep. So we'll just read it. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is August 22, 2018. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. The time is now 7:32, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It's being streamed live on Channel 9. It will be replayed on Channel 9, and we will place it on YouTube as well for your viewing. And at this time, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to request a moment of silence in memory of Joseph Jackson and also Albert Olivera. When I saw the obituary for Mr. Jackson, it brought back memories. I didn't know him as a resident in town, but I knew him because he worked for IBM. And when the school department got its first magnetic card systems, Mr. Jackson was the man who came out when we needed assistance or repairs. Albert Olivera was a man very involved with his church, St. Nicholas. He sang in the choir. He lived in an area with a lot of homes close together. But he stood out because he had a yard full of gorgeous flowers. He spent so much time in his yard that people walking by would stop and comment on him. So in memory of Mr. Jackson and Mr. Olivera, I request a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and our condolences to their family and friends. So the first order of business before public input is to ratify the appointment of the ambulance billing clerk for the fire chief, Mr. McGee. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Thank you. We had 37 applications for this new position, which is pretty exciting because Dayton's a great place to work. We interviewed nine candidates, most of them having medical billing experience. But the ultimate candidate is Ms. Rebecca Moss. She has actual ambulance billing experience and was, if not the only, one of the only ones with actual ambulance billing. I have full faith in her ability to help us carve out this new position, make it kind of a bridge from a third-party vendor of ambulance billing to in-house. And Chief McGee talked a lot about the personal touch, a personal connection, which I really liked, but to the community, and I think she'll be a great addition. So we are here asking that you ratify her appointment, and congratulations to Ms. Moss.
Absolutely. I do have, it's not actually a question about the ambulance billing clerk or the administrative assistant, but regarding ComStar, what do we, do we know before we vote on this if, like, what the plan is? Did we already take all that information back?
So, no. Because this is so new, and we'll be relying on Ms. Moss to help us guide. She's in a very unique position where she gets to be part of the decision-making about the most appropriate, the most appropriate software, programs, and how to make it the best fit for Dayton. So she'll be working with the medical, I'm forgetting your name, your title, John. John Gauthier is the head of the medical billing right now. So him, the chief, and Ms. Moss will be working together. And ComStar's not going anywhere right away, but once that position's up and running and the new processes and policies are put out, then we'll be separating.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we ratify the upcoming appointment of Rebecca Moss to the position of ambulance billing clerk slash administrative assistant to the fire department as recommended by Chief McGee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I just have one thing I forgot to mention. Her schedule, the fire chief and her will be sitting down on the 31st to go over her schedule.
Perfect. Any further discussion?
I can remember when we had a discussion, when we had problems with the uncollected receivables. And we met with ComStar, and they said whatever the town chose to do, they would phase out so that whatever billings they had at the time, they would finish up to a point of if the town went on its own, and they would attempt to collect whatever they had billed, but also the town would have the opportunity to pursue it if they chose it. So it would be a smooth transition. That's what they told us a few years ago.
Yep. That long.
Yeah.
This is great. No, this is good progress. Any further discussion? Selectman Pacheco?
Nope. She's starting September 10, I believe.
Oh, perfect. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations, Chief. He was excited. I spoke to him last night about it. All right. Public input. Free rein. Any questions, comments, compliments, anything?
Can we just talk about Sylvia Way later?
Yes. Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing, and I don't know if this was a, it was addressed to my husband. I don't know if this was a blanket mailing. It's from Clean Choice Energy, and it's a company who's offering for you to change your supplier. If you pay National Grid, you can choose a clean energy supplier. My concern is that it really looks official, and it states that you can switch to them and you can change your mind. Well, that's not the case because we have aggregation. So I just mentioned to people in town, if you got this mailing from Clean Choice Energy, it really sounds like you're going to do something great and buy energy that's cleanly generated. But we're under aggregation, and if you choose to go with another supplier, you cannot get back into our program, even though this says you can. So please be aware of this.
Also on the back.
Sure.
To the general public?
Absolutely.
And tell them that's a scam?
Well, I don't think it's a scam, but it's misleading.
Yeah. Scam, misleading, all the same thing. But it's, sorry, what trace of words?
I do know the council and agent director is aware of it. We talked about it, and I would just like to add on the back, if you flip it over, it's a lot more expensive than what your aggregation rate is, so.
The thing I said was, there is no risk in switching. Yes, there is. So, but we'll, I'll leave this, we'll get this out somehow, but just so people are aware of it.
We'll include it. We send a weekly email of things coming up in the town. So we'll definitely include this and put it on our website. Thank you. That's a good suggestion. Any other public input? And again, if you're here for the new business Sylvia Way requests for comments, we will absolutely have public input under that agenda item as well. Okay? Let's move on. At this time, I'm going to yield the floor to Madam Administrator for the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. This is something I am over the moon to report. We have received, and special thanks to Tom Ferry, I'm glad you're here. We've been awarded a state, a state, we've been awarded a grant for $92,346 for planning, field data collection, engineering design, and permitting for the Briggs Street culvert over Sunken Brook. And that is so that we can finally address the massive washout, the flooding, the erosion, the endangerment to the critical habitat. And it's, I'm thrilled, I can't stop smiling about it. I'm very happy. So we are working on that. I've written a scope of service. I've written some other bid documents that will go out in the package to engineers with ecological experience. We'll probably do a site visit over there so they can take a good look at it, and we'll be working with the state. So special thanks to DER for the award, and thank you, Tom Ferry. I don't know if you want to add anything.
Mr. Ferry.
You have the floor.
I took the pictures. She did all the.
She did the writing.
She did all the narration and really sold the grant, you know, a lot of company reference.
Do you just want to state exactly what it is you're doing at this point in time so that people who live in that area know where you're working?
At the Briggs Street off of Middle Street. There's two sets of guardrails before you get to the first turn. There's several culverts really close together.
Right. Entering from which street?
From Middle Street. And the grant is poignant on activity from this area against the village of Sunken Brook for the ecology. So it's not repair of the bridge? No, this project's not doing the bridge. Well, congratulations.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Madam Administrator, Tom, for the great job you guys did for the town.
Absolutely.
This was the story in the Gazette, right?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you both. You brought a lot of pride with this grant to our town. Thank you.
That's a good one. So that being said, now the paperwork starts. So you have in your packets a couple of things to sign, one of which is a designation form of who can sign for the grant. So if you would vote to authorize, I put myself and the chairman on that form. And then if that is favorable, we will send that in along with the contracts, two copies of the contracts to DER, and we will get started. We're on a very specific time crunch with this. So we have to have everything done by June 30, 2019. So as I've already written the bid specs, we have to select an engineer in the month of September. So I'll be back before you on the 26th with that selected firm, and we will get started.
So the work has to be completed by June 30 of next year.
June 30.
Another list, another one for the list, Tom.
So you need a motion that the chairman, as well as you, be signatories?
Correct. Yes. And then Mrs. Brady will notarize this.
I'll make that motion, then.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. And again, congratulations both of you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to go. Actually, all of my, all of my report involves Tom. I'm glad he wasn't. So we, Tom is a tree warden. He's wearing the tree warden hat right now. We went out and drafted a scope of services for tree thinning at about three acres on the town forest, Zero Chestnut Street. We solicited quotes from four vendors, and the apparent low bidder is Brightman Lumber Company. I don't know if you want to add anything before they award the bid?
They tend to leave, I mean, their job early October. They have two other jobs they're considering. One falls through or whatever they made you earlier, but they're having early October, which is falls in line with getting contracts out. So, well.
There will be a detail on site, a police detail, to protect the street and the residents. And it is to remove the hazardous trees, not all. We're not clearing three acres of forest. It's for hazardous trees.
Do either of my colleagues have any questions?
My only question is, one of these bids.
I don't know.
They, they. Hundred ten thousand.
Hundred, and so the low bid is $9,000, and second is 12.6, and the high one is $110,000. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the bid to do the selective cutting of trees on Chestnut Street to Brightman Lumber Company at the bid price of total bid of $9,000.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Ferry, will any of this wood be good that could be used for lumber?
No.
It's junk?
Italian, red minds that die off.
Oh, oh, okay.
Obviously, some other trees have to go to get to them. Some of them are already tipped and meaning they're quite hazardous now. Put our utilities in jeopardy and I will re-juried plus the recreational path as well.
Is it, is it mixed hardwood and soft?
Yes, yes. So we'll see how clean it is when it, when it done, all wood, everything's going to go through a chipper and be removed off the ground, and stumps will remain. And we'll assess the site. It could be a candidate for a tree planting such as a chestnut or something like that. We'll see how bad it is when they're done.
I heard on the news either last night or tonight that the state is developing a program, and they're going to fund a tree planting program. And I'm thinking it's part of, it's not like abode day or anything, but I don't know if it's part of the climate bill. That's already passed. And, and proposed funding, it's 2-point-something billion dollars. But I did hear about the tree program, so we'll have to kind of check into that.
Any questions for Madam Pacheco?
No.
All right. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Again, thank you, Mr. Ferry, very much. I have to think about the date.
Okay. And not that anyone wants to think about snow, but we have to. We, thank you. We are going to join the Town of Medfield for a salt bid, and we just need authorization for you to, from you, so that we can go forward and do that. The bid will be at the end of September, and we're thinking we'll get a better price than what Sursage provided back in June. Sursage, that group ended up voting to throw out the salt bid and not go through it at all. So us as communities were a little bit on our own with what we wanted to do. We could either go out to bid by ourselves or join, and Medfield has always found great success and the lowest prices. So the thinking behind it was that in September, we would get a better rate. So here we are.
All right.
I'll make a motion then that we join Medfield Salt Bid.
A second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Ferry. Magnesium chloride-treated salt with an organic-based performance enhancer. Does that mean if, when you buy the salt, the mixture, you won't have to mix this up like you've been doing? It's all going to be pre-mixed?
Correct. But that's not what we want.
We're not, we're not betting for that.
That's essentially a much more expensive.
Is the organic-based performance enhancer molasses?
No.
Okay, well, not.
We're skipping it. Just the salt.
Mr. Ferry's elixir is better.
That's right. That's what he told me, so we're not going for it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. The last item under my report is regarding the cable license agreement. We are working with a, an attorney who specializes in this, and I'm pretty optimistic about what we can get for our next agreement with Comcast. What this means is Comcast and the town have an agreement to help fund our public access programming. So the cable group gets money essentially to enhance their program and do a lot with that. So I am actually seeking authorization that the Board of Selectmen allow me to sign the agreement with Attorney Bill Solomon, whom you've already approved to serve as our counsel in this capacity. I just, it's in the interest of time. I have repeatedly asked him for the agreement and just am not, I think he's a one-man show, so I'm not really getting that from him. But it's about $170 an hour, which is very comparable to our current town council rate. So I'm seeking, I do not have the agreement in front of me. I've been asking for it and have yet to receive it, but I am asking authorization to sign that when it does appear, so that we can continue.
So has the board seen this agreement, then?
No, I haven't seen it either.
Is there any way, I'm sorry.
No. So will it be brought back to us then before you sign it? Or you just?
Well, I'm seeking authorization, but I can understand the hesitance. So really, it's just in the interest of time. But if you don't want to do it, my feelings aren't going to be hurt.
But is the, are we, would, is, I guess, is the implication that it would be holding it up if you weren't sort of pre-authorized?
So the agreement is between the Town of Dayton and Attorney Bill Solomon to serve as our counsel in this capacity. And then we would be going forward. I mean, it hasn't really held anything else up. I've been talking to him, and we met with him last week just to go over our plan. And later in September, we'll be meeting with the Comcast representative, the government affairs liaison through Comcast for this region. So, I mean, I would hope if I'm the attorney, I would like to have that agreement shored up, so.
So it's not the cable agreement?
No, this is an agreement contracting with him to serve as our counsel.
Have you asked David Gay for permission to use? And he said it was okay?
Correct. Yeah, this was a while ago, back in December or January, a long time ago.
This is like one of the first things you may have done.
Right.
Okay.
But I can, I understand the hesitance, so.
Well, I'll make the motion then to authorize the town administrator to sign cable, sign the cable license negotiation agreement.
I'll second it. I would like to see it.
I agree. So I just want to clarify. So this isn't the actual agreement with Comcast?
This is for legal services.
Legal services to negotiate that agreement, yeah.
No, I'm okay with that. That's why I was wondering why you had mentioned the fact that, because I remember approving him to represent the town in this capacity. Okay, no, I'm totally okay with that. Any further discussion? And again, just make sure, you know.
It'll get to you, of course.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding.
No problem.
All right. Under Old Business, agreement between the Town of Dayton and the City of Taunton for access to shooting range for police officers?
This also came before you a while ago, prior to Selectman Pacheco serving, but this has gone through the city solicitor in Taunton. Our own town council has been approved by their, their group, the police department, and our police chief is okay with this. This would allow the police officers in the city of Taunton to access our range and use it for practice, trainings, all that good stuff.
Any comments, questions?
Has this happened in the past, if they?
Not with us, not with us.
Selectman Goula?
The only thing is, there's one word, third line from the end of the first paragraph. It says intendent, I think that means intended.
I think you're right.
Intended to benefit.
Well, that's just figures because one side's already signed. We will, all right, well, I'll make them aware of that and get the okay to change it.
Should we still vote on it tonight?
As amended.
Yeah, I don't see any problem approving it.
Any further discussion? Sure. Mr. Haggard, tie.
I just assume that it would be during the normal operating hours of the town please also use the shooting range for bad issues of crimes of late-night shooting up there, which is probably unauthorized maybe. But, so I'm sure it goes without saying, just so people can know.
Correct.
And use of, use of the training facility is at the, under the control of our police chief. So I would urge, if you had any complaints about it, send it to him, make him aware, and he can clean that up for you.
Good question. All right. Accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement between the Town of Dayton and the City of Taunton for access for police officers from each community to access the shooting range located off Tremont Street in Dayton.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, under Old Business, is review of Cemetery Commission schedule of fees and amend vote?
Does the vice chair of the Cemetery Commission wish to speak on this?
This is a third hat, this meeting.
The last date that you guys voted on is, excuse me, I'm sorry. Selectman Goula, I have the question of if receipts could come in and go over to perpetual care? And she's correct, they cannot. We already have a receipt reserve account set up, and it's designated for that. And that can only be used similar to your ambulance fund. You would need a town meeting to spend that money, so everyone can decide if that's the right thing to do. And so that money will be protected and designated just for cemeteries at that point. So we just need to, I don't know what's the best way to handle it, ratify the vote you had or amend the vote that we had.
Are these rates correct? Is the only thing that changed was the receipt of funds and how they can be used?
I don't think we need, do we need to do anything?
Well, that last line has to, I guess, be taken out.
All right. So if we strike 100% of the proceeds from lot sales, we'll go to perpetual care? We have to strike that. All right.
It's regular amended to receipt reserve account. Either or, I believe.
Receipt reserve account?
Yes. For the cemeteries.
Okay. So if the Cemetery Commission needed to spend money, let's say for repairs or something, this is an account that could be set up, and you would have access to it for things like repairs or?
Set into a town bill.
Right.
We make recommendations.
So it's like those revolving accounts we have that we set up every year, where like planning board, they aren't really revolving. We authorize them every year. The library has them.
Correct. And this is not necessarily responsible.
Okay. So 100% of the proceeds from lot sales will go to a receipts reserve for approp, appropriation to be established. We can do that at the fall town meeting, I would assume.
The council will be there.
Oh, it is?
It's the spending.
Yes, correct. We just need your gratification of destination and receipts.
Will go to, to the account reserved for appropriations. Is that okay? A cemetery account reserved for appropriations? I should say cemetery, right?
Yeah, receipt reserve account.
All right. The cemetery account. Receipts reserved for appropriation. Okay. Okay. So first, Mr. Chairman, do we know what the date of that meeting was? Okay, so first, Mr. Chairman, do we know what the date of that meeting was?
August 8th.
What was it?
August 8th.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I will first make a motion that we rescind the vote relative to receipts from the cemetery, sale of lots in the cemetery that was taken on August the 8th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Selectman Gula?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rates as established and that 100% of the proceeds from lot, cemetery lot sales will go to the cemetery account reserved for appropriations.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. And I just wanted to ask this under discussion. It'll still be effective September 1st, 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
And as was said before, if someone does not have the means to pay for interment, the Board could vote to write off the cost and authorize that, authorize that the expense be paid from this?
Again, I believe we can only recommend and bring that to the selectmen.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It would come to the Board of Selectmen, like we do with ambulance write-offs. So, if you, but the, but the interment could be covered from money in the account, because obviously, if we hire somebody to?
Right, because if it needs to be done, it will be taken care of.
Okay, okay, fine, okay. That answers the question I had about if we can do something for people who might not have the means, so that takes care of it. Okay, thank you.
So, the only expense though would be for the Highway Department, be digging the grave, because the, the lot, the money for the lot itself would go into this account, so we're not taking money out of this account for the lot, because we would probably waive the fee for the lot, and then maybe take monies out of this for the Highway Department if necessary, yeah.
They send her in working hours and she takes it all.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ferry. All right, moving on to New Business, discuss date for Fall Town Meeting. We do have a letter here, a note, I should say, that says that August 13th, they penciled in two dates at the Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School Auditorium, and I believe they're both for October 15th and October 18th for the Fall Town Meeting, the special meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, but I am recommending the 15th, because that is what works for everyone's schedule, as long as it works, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
As long as it works for yours.
Is that the one that's on the schedule that we approved?
No, so that will be amended, but no big, no big deal there. We do enough posting and advertising of Town Meeting, it has its own set of requirements, that's not going to seem anything.
We know if you're not there, it's because you don't want to be.
They're quick these days.
They are.
So.
Don't say that.
Yes.
Thanks, you jinxed us.
October 15th is the recommended day. It is a Monday, and usually they're at 7:00. And that's what I'm requesting that you set a special Town Meeting. If that is the date, you would have to open the Town Meeting warrant tonight and close on the 26th.
Of September?
September. It's a very quick turnaround.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we set the date for the special Town Meeting for Monday, October 15th, 2018, 7:00 PM at Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School Auditorium.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
And what I will do, because of the quick turnaround, I will be indicating in a memo to Boards, Commissions, Departments, to get those warrant articles in as fast as possible.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we open the warrant for the special Town Meeting this evening, and that we set the closing date for warrant articles as September 26th, 2018, at noontime.
I'll second that motion.
Actually, I'm sorry, let me just think, I need to count back days, because it might have to be the 12th. No, it can be the 26th, because we post on the 2nd. So, yeah, sorry. Proceed.
Okay.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. I know the Department Heads and the Departments have been good about handing in the articles on time, but I do want to stress the importance of making sure that your article, if you have something you'd like to place on the warrant for the special Town Meeting, please abide by the September 26th, 2018 deadline. We don't want to have anyone scrambling or running around, so please be mindful, think ahead, and we look forward to seeing your warrant articles.
Sooner is always better.
Absolutely. We like planning here.
That's right.
All right, next on the agenda is to rescind the appointment of Mr. Joe Tamarkin to the Open Space Committee. And I just wanted to ask one question. Was there any, did we receive a letter? Was it an email? How do we know Mr. Tamarkin doesn't?
We received an email from the chairman of the.
Mrs. Bidlock?
Yes. He had indicated in an email to her.
Oh, okay, all right.
That he was not interested, so we became CC'd on, on all of this communication.
Sure. Mr.?
Yeah, Brett, I'm on the committee, yeah. Joe was unable to continue unfortunately. He was a really valuable member.
Absolutely. I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure we weren't going to take someone off that still wanted to be on, that's all. All right, any further questions?
Uh, before I make the motion, did he, did he attend any meetings after the appointment was made?
He did not.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the appointment of Joseph Tamarkin from the Open Space Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes, and I just want to thank Mr. Tamarkin for his service. Open Space Committee is near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate your service, sir. Next on the agenda, ooh, it's like Survivor, we're going to rescind the appointment of Mr. James Ready to the Land Use Committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind the appointment of James Ready to the Land Use Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Did we receive a notification? He's kind of a verbal guy. Okay, all right, just making sure. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, discuss the date.
Mr. Chairman, so, we now have a vacancy on the Open Space Committee and the Land Use Committee.
That's correct. And I'll make sure that we.
Update our list.
Absolutely. We have a vacancies part on the website, we'll make sure that gets updated, and we'll send out the email reminders, okay?
And may I just request that you take item 8F out of order?
Absolutely.
Which is a Sylvia Way.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 8F out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes, and this is the Sylvia Way request for comments.
If I may, I just want to make this clear, this is not the public hearing. The Planning Board holds that public hearing. I had requested that this be on the agenda, because I wanted the Selectmen to have the opportunity to provide any comments they may have to the Planning Board ahead of that hearing, which is going to be on September 5th at 6:30. So, I just wanted to let everybody know, this is not the hearing. Thank you.
So, if someone, if a resident in town still has comments about this, they should probably still also go.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We don't know if the Planning Board will listen to us, they're elected. So.
Can I give some background information on this?
Absolutely. Flow is yours.
So, Sylvia Way is part of Pines, which is a 40B in town, and the Zoning Board of Appeals was very involved in this, this 40B. And we voted in April to rescind a, we had a condition that it would never, Sylvia Way would never be a public way. And in April, at a meeting in April, at that time I was Chair of the ZBA, we voted to allow this to be a public way. Has to be approved by the townspeople, has to be approved by the, the Planning Board has to make a recommendation. So, we felt as a result that because Sylvia Way, there were taxpayers living on that street, there's also a homeowners' association, that they were getting kind of taxed twice. The homeowners' association was set up so that it would maintain the road as well as landscape and the detention centers and stuff like that. What happened, we had, if Ms. School, I'm not sure if you were involved Brett, but we had, maybe a year or two ago, we had a joint meeting of the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the ZBA. Were you involved?
Oh, yes, I remember that.
And I remember Dean Cronin, a former Selectman, indicating that why should the people in these 40Bs have a housing, homeowners' association fee and also pay taxes, and why aren't those roads becoming a public way? So, I brought this back to the Zoning Board, I brought it back to the people, the developer for the Pines, and it was suggested that they bring it back before the Board and that we would rescind this condition. And it was the unanimous removal of that condition. We felt it was best for the, for the taxpayers. They're all paying taxes, why should they not have their roads plowed? Why shouldn't they have their roads maintained by the town? Why should they have to pay an additional association fee to maintain the roads and the plowing and stuff like that? So, we felt it was very important that Sylvia Way become a public road. Now, I know it's going to go before the Planning Board, I plan on attending that meeting also and advocating what my position was on the, not as a representative of the Zoning Board, but my position as a citizen, I guess, that it should become a public way. And we had at our meeting, ZBA meeting, a lot of people who live on Sylvia Way come to our meeting advocating that it become a public way. So, I think it's very critical that the, the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to be making a motion, we can get some more input, but I'm going to be making a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the Planning Board that this become a public way. But before I make that motion, if there's any, any members of the Board that wish to speak on this, as well as any public.
The way I want to do this, if it's okay with my colleagues, is we will, we will give our comments first, then we'll open it up to the public and we'll just call on people. Is that okay with everyone? Selectman Gula?
So, if it becomes a public way, do the whole, does the homeowners' association go away?
No, because they still have to maintain these, these greenery, these plants going into the development. They have to maintain the retention or detention ponds, there's two detention ponds there.
Oh, what, septic? Do they have a joint septic?
They don't have, initially, this 40B originally was a 66 homes, age restricted, restricted. It went down to a 45 with a central septic system. It then became 33 houses, so we went, cut it in half, and they have their own septic system.
Okay.
So.
So, it would, I assume it has a sidewalk?
It has a sidewalk on one side.
Okay.
Yep.
So, they would maintain their open space, so to speak?
They would maintain the.
Do you have a park or a playground or anything?
No.
Oh, okay.
Any plan, was there any plan for that?
No.
Okay.
It was not part of the 40B. This, the one next, Stoney Ridge, no, Stoney Ridge has a park, as you probably know, but you guys don't. Your development was smaller than Stoney Ridge. If people want to, if you want to see, this is the road that we're talking about.
I guess.
And we, the road is narrower than, a lot of our roads is 20 feet wide, that's paved. We asked the Fire Department, as well as the Highway Department, their input on this. They were not opposed to this. In fact, I believe you had suggested at one of our Department Head meetings that because the road is a little narrower, maybe the traffic would be a little slower, so people won't be speeding in this area. We made a condition that no overnight parking on the street, because it is a narrow street.
Okay, so the drainage lot, that's the area you're talking about?
There's two of them, yeah.
And we had open space here and over here.
There's a detention pond also. I'm not sure if you reflected over there too.
Okay.
So.
Oh, I see it, right here. Drainage is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Mr. Ferry did have some concerns that the Zoning Board addressed regarding the detention ponds. There was some, some of it was crumbling, and one of them, the other one, the water was coming outside the fence. He had some concerns about the trees, some concerns about some damage on the side of the road. Nicole Skalison, Office Manager for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I went to this development, we looked at all of Mr. Ferry's concerns. I met with Mr. Bishop, who was Bishop Hasham, who's the developer, and I went over all the things that I felt that needed to be corrected. The lock, he didn't have locks on the detention, detention ponds. He repaired everything that we had asked of him. We're satisfied with the work that he's done, and they can explain if they have any concerns, obviously, but we were satisfied with the way it was fixed.
I guess my question for either Mr. Ferry or anyone on the dais is, regardless of the Planning Board hearing on September 5th, if, if the Planning Board approves it to be, you know, a public way, will that still go to the special Town Meeting?
The Town, it has to. The question is if they deny it, but whether it goes still before. I'm going to suggest that we recommend that it go, and I would also, if the Planning Board rejects it, I believe that the, so that meeting is what day is? September 5th?
October 15th. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
So, they would, the people on that street would have time to put that on the warrant?
Yeah.
If the Planning Board, so that's something.
But it's 200 signatures.
But it's 200 signatures for a special.
Correct.
Not 10. The annual is 10.
Don't have 200 people living in that development.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it has to be registered voters, they don't all have to live in that development.
Yeah, I know, I just, that those would be the most people interested in doing.
And I just caution anybody.
Why would we have to petition it? If the Board of Selectmen agreed for the article?
I believe, if the Planning Board rejects it, would, can we still put it on the?
I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
I don't think so, because I think they have to approve it as a public way, but I'll look into that. And if the residents put it, residents can put anything on the warrant by petition of 200 signatures for a special. I would just caution that it has to say exactly what is signed for goes on the warrant. So, proceed with caution, consult somebody, make sure that it's legal.
Yeah, don't just compile.
I would just ask, before you open it up to the public, if Mr. Ferry would like to add anything?
Just a point of order, if these are developments, that would be a problem.
A continuing set the Planning Board level?
Yeah.
Yes, it would be a problem for the special.
Yeah, it would only be a problem for the October meeting, like, you'll have a comfortable amount of time for the annual.
I think this raises a good point too, in public, we're going to call on you in just a moment. I think maybe after the special Town Meeting, there are some other developments that are unapproved, and I actually thought, I don't know how my colleagues feel, because you were also there as a member of the Zoning Board. I liked those meetings where we all came together and we had joint meetings, I think a lot got accomplished.
I thought we were going to have another one, since maybe we need to.
Yeah, we should definitely call one, maybe if not before, definitely after.
It was, it was Mr. Agia that got everybody together the first time.
Yes, he kind of was the moderator of the meeting.
The herder of cats.
Yep.
Are you currently plowing these roads in the winter? No. No, or?
That was, I did not need to go and take care of it.
Maybe take care of it, okay.
This was one of the concerns about joint meeting that we had, that there was a developer in town that wasn't plowing. And we come up with a agreement, I think four inches of snow, then the town's going to plow it, and then they would build.
And build the developer.
But we didn't think that the Highway Department should have to go around checking all these developments. If this stayed a private way, would be an issue down the road, this developer wouldn't be there anymore, suppose the people living there are late calling the persons to plow, or the people supposed to plow Sylvia Way is late, town would go in and plow it. We're trying to avoid that, and like.
That's, that's exactly where it's really more problematic, when we have to try to figure out how to open up a road, execute the clearance, go on, rather than continually file it.
Right.
That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
All right.
So, the hearing again is scheduled for the 5th of September?
Yep.
At what time?
Planning Board. Theirs are at 6:00. I thought they were, their meetings are at 6:00.
They have another hearing. Maybe I'm confused, but they have two hearings that night.
Their meetings are always at 6:00.
One is at 6:00 and one's at 6:30. But there's another public hearing scheduled.
Okay, well, if they show up at 6:00, they're going to hit it.
And we're not meeting that night, correct?
No, no, we're not.
It was originally one of our meetings, but it's not going to be a meeting.
So, the Planning Board hearing.
All right, Public.
Okay, I'm all set. No, I'm set.
Yeah, sure. If you don't mind, just, you don't have to stand, but just your address and your name.
Yeah, my name is Adelucha. I live at 18 Sylvia Way. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership on the subject and your support. Hopefully, we can get this pushed through like all those other streets that have, in recent years, that have gotten pushed through. I would just like to note that it's 33 houses, like was previously said, and by my calculations, our property taxes as a group are almost a quarter of a million dollars. So, I think that we certainly be warrant, you know, to get full town services on our street. And I'd like to thank you here.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address.
My name is Steve Shaw. I live at 42 Sylvia. Are we the only one in jeopardy, is it us? Because I noticed in some discussion with you up there that this isn't, Sylvia Way isn't the only one that's a problem. Will we Sylvia Way the only one with a problem?
I didn't, I didn't, I never said a problem. What I meant was there are other developments that haven't yet been accepted by the town?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there is still on them.
We're not the only one in jeopardy.
Okay.
No, in fact, the other, the pines, Sylvia Way is the first 40B to be completed. We've approved seven in town. Two of them went away, five are active, but this is the first one that's going to be completed. So, they've, they've built all, as you, as you know, they built all the houses, they're ready to, ready to close it. So, it's the first one that's coming before us, but it was the only 40B that we made a condition that it be not a public way. All the others can, don't have to go to the ZBA to get approval to be a public way. It was the only one. So, had to come back before the ZBA, which I initiated along with the developers, so that it could become a public, a public way. So, we're hoping that-
Was there a stipulation that they favored this?
It's because that was, of all the 40Bs that we did, that was the narrowest road. All the other roads were a little wider, so we, we made it narrow. But then, as a result of that joint meeting that we had, it was agreed by all, or most of the people there that you guys are taxpayers, and you should have the benefit of all the rest of us taxpayers. So, we're hoping that you guys, I'm hoping that you guys prevail at the Planning Board.
Anybody else?
Are all of you residents of that special area?
I would just raise my hand. My name's Sean, 19 Sylvia Way. I've been at a couple of meetings, and I want to thank everyone for having us, and Ken I'd like to thank, because he's been proponent for us becoming a public way. It may be a little bit narrower than other roads, but if you saw the slight lines, we're certainly a lot easier to drive on development than just driving down when we come on our development, the Pine Street and all of those other side roads that we drive on. So, it may be narrower, but the slight lanes are good. People do actually drive at a very respectful speed inside development.
And we don't have trees and telephone poles to hit.
Exactly. And I just, again, I'd like to thank Ken and I asked the Board to please, you know, help us get this approved as taxpayers. We'd like to be, have all the rights and privileges and all the other kinds.
I'll tell you honestly, my decision is based on the information I got from Mr. Ferry, because he's the department that has to maintain it. If he had concerns, I would have concerns.
Right.
I think the Board is pretty much reliant on Mr. Ferry in all instances when it comes to acceptance of roads.
You're taking them off the general rate a lot.
We don't want to hear that. We don't want to hear that.
Under $50.
I was going to say that.
Yeah. But the ZBA also contacted Mr. Ferry. We wanted his input, too, and in fact, if he had told us that he didn't think it would, should become a public way, we would not have, we sent to that. So, we wanted his input also, so.
And may I just ask a question? The Fire Department is okay with this?
Yes, we-
Because that is quite narrow.
We have an email from him saying it was, he was okay with it.
And is it posted there now that there's no parking, on street parking?
It's actually part of all governments that you can't park on street anymore.
Okay, perfect.
That's good for me.
Anyone else from the public? Sir, did you have any?
Yeah, Craig, very familiar, very familiar, like, I'd like to thank Mr. Chico from the people, zoning board meeting, bringing this to light to reverse the changes. I'd just like to point out, I understand the status of 40B community while it is, but only approximately nine to 10 houses are 40B, just like to clarify.
Yeah, with a 40B, 25% of the houses have to be affordable houses. I happen to be in favor of affordable housing. I don't like the fact that it's mandated, if you mind my personal opinion, and I don't like the fact that the town, the state mandates it and doesn't give us help with the schools and stuff like that. But I, I am in favor of it, so. It is a 40B. It was nothing against the, nothing against the development at all.
Nothing against the 40B, that it's not 100% across the board.
Thank you.
Sir, ma'am? No comments? I would like to make, if there's no more public input, just one suggestion. Get your neighbors before the hearing and show up with them. Showing up does matter. Being vocal, you know, respectful, of course, as you've been here this evening, does matter, and it makes a difference, and it shows the Board who's doing the hearing that, you know, this is what we want. We want our streets accepted and approved as a public way. Okay? Any other comments, questions, concerns?
You have one question.
Sure, sir.
When did you say this next meeting was, the ZBA one?
It's actually the Planning Board.
September 5th.
Yep.
September 5th, 2018. It's a Wednesday.
We're not sure, it's 6:00 or 6:30. We're not sure, but it should be posted.
You go at 6:00, you'll, you'll be there.
Well, usually, usually it comes up on your itinerary for your meetings anyway.
Yes.
We'll send out, it'll be in the weekly email. Mr. Ferry?
What is the location?
Well, that's why I say show up at 6:00, because if there's a large crowd, they'll have to move. But I think they're looking at the lower level meeting room, but I, I agree. I don't know if it's going to be big enough.
They have-
They have everything I need.
I will, so, we would update it via the mass email that goes out. We would know before the meeting, a week in advance, where it was going to be. So, they have had public hearings. I know for the G Lopes, when they were trying to do something near Council Oak 2, I know they had it at the middle school, because they had anticipated a large volume.
There should also be a mailing sent to the butters.
Correct.
So, all of you should be receiving in the mail when that notice is. And if the crowd shows up and it is too large, all they'll have to do is post on the original meeting place that was posted on the agenda where the, the new location is, and just make it clear that that's where it is. But definitely pay attention to your mail and those itineraries.
Absolutely.
And if the weather is good, we've got the football field outside. If the crowd is really big.
Built-in seating, that's actually not a bad idea.
We had a graduation there this year, so we could have a public meeting.
Any further public input? Anything else from the Board or from Madam Administrator?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I'll make a motion then that Sylvia Way become a public, a public road, as our recommendation, as our recommendation.
To send to the Planning Board?
Send to the Planning Board.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I support this as well. Any further discussion? And again, we will, probably after the special town meeting, this, hopefully this will be on the special town meeting warrant, but for the other unaccepted developments, we do have our eye on that, and we will be addressing that with the other relevant boards in the future. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. And, boss, if we, if we could just make sure that the Planning Board does get some sort of a correspondence detailing our vote before their public hearing. All right, thank you.
To-do list.
All right. So, we will go back to new business, Agenda Item 8D, discuss the date for meeting with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen and Fin-, oh, you're very welcome. Everybody, have a good night. Absolutely, have a good night.
That goes up public.
Discuss the date for meeting with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. I did, we keep getting, so this is for everybody, we keep getting requests from the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen to meet with them before the meeting with the School Committee, which is what, we agreed not to do that. So, I did send an email to their town administrator, who sent the email requesting a private meeting before the School Committee meeting. I guess I'll just read it. I said, "I hope this email finds you well. It has come to my attention that the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen is again requesting a meeting with our Board of Selectmen before meeting with the School Committee. And I apologize if Town Administrator Aaronstein has already responded to you. I apologize to you, too. But I wanted to make sure this message reaches the Board of Selectmen." And the reason I said that is because, again, they sent us another request, so I wasn't sure. "The Board of Selectmen voted humanely not to meet privately with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen. We did, however, vote to meet with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and I meant both from both towns, and the School Committee, together, because we feel everyone deserves a seat at the proverbial table. And this is to discuss for the public the regional agreement. Therefore, our Board will not be meeting with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen in advance of the School Committee meeting. In addition, the proposal the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen prepared is not up for discussion. The draft agreement that the School Committee prepared, the officials elected to represent the schools, is the proposal that will be discussed. The Board of Selectmen will discuss tomorrow evening, that's tonight, which date in September to attend the School Committee meeting to discuss the district's proposed draft agreement. We hope the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen choose to participate. Thank you for your attention to this matter. It is greatly appreciated. Yours truly, Brett." I did, the reason why I printed this out for everybody is because I want, first of all, the email came to the Board of Selectmen's email address, and I'm not sure if my colleagues have access to it and were able to see the request, which is exactly why I wanted to print my response out, but also to give you the opportunity to rake me over the coals over it, if you'd like. But I stand by-
Could you bring a rake?
I stand by what I said. It makes me uncomfortable the way that it appears, and I'm not attributing any motives to anybody. They're all good people on the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, but it makes me uncomfortable the way they're trying to meet before the meeting. Why would we need to meet before the meeting? We're going to have a meeting and hash it all out. So, I will open the floor to my colleagues. I will suggest one last thing. My understanding is that the School Committee meets on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of every month, especially once they're back on their regular schedule in September. I don't have a preference for whether it's going to be the 2nd Tuesday of the month or the 4th, so I guess we can discuss that. I say, since we know we want Rehoboth to show up and be present and choose to be there to discuss the regional agreement, I say we respond to the School Committee and tell them, "We'll pick either date, whichever one Rehoboth agrees to, and let's kind of hold their feet to the fire on this and see how serious they are."
So, we're talking September 11th or September 25th, is that?
Yep, that would be there. And that's their normal schedule, so that's when they'd normally be meeting. And it's, and I believe personally, when Selectmen Taylor, former Selectmen Taylor was here, I think we went not at a School Committee meeting, it was like a special meeting. I actually feel more comfortable having it be a regularly scheduled meeting, so that it's recorded, everyone, you know, can follow what we're doing. So, I'll open it up to my colleagues.
I was hoping it was going to be a separate meeting, because I know how long
Yes.
the School Committee meetings run, and if we're going to be in the media center, they can record it, they can broadcast it, but I was hoping it was going to be a one topic agenda, because this is not something we're going to get through quickly, and to have it on the regular School Committee agenda, we could be there for a long, long time.
And I, we spent five hours at their last meeting.
But we could ask that it be called Sona, you know, be one of the first items that they discuss.
The reason why I said their regularly scheduled meeting is because when they briefly broached this topic at their last meeting, I remember Chairwoman Kuchar, I believe it was, stating that they were thinking it would be at one of their regular meetings.
And we would have to see if the Finance Committee is available for one of these nights.
Or at least like a represent, you know, like Mr. Brendan, Mr. Dingus, Mr. Schwartz.
It also might motivate, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and my first reaction was it should be separate, just because of all the people, to corral together, but it might motivate not quicker action, but to keep it moving, because they know that they do have other business.
But to discuss the regional agreement-
It shouldn't be taken lightly.
I'm not going to go there and listen to somebody who'd say, "We want this, this, I'm, I've gone through, I've gone through the agreements, because we've got copies, all of them, and I've looked at what's currently in place." And I don't think it's going to be a quick discussion. I mean, I, the stuff there I want to talk about, newly proposed, and I'm, I'm sure there's going to be stuff I'm not looking at that others are going to say they want to talk about it, or they need info, and, and I'm only talking from the Dyton side of the table. The Rehoboth Selectmen did prepare an agreement. Whatever is in that agreement that we are not going to discuss as their agreement, I'm sure they're going to bring it up as part of the proposed regional agreement. So, it's going to be a long night.
So, shall we say something like, "We can attend both of those meeting, both those meeting nights, but are open to a special meeting scheduled specifically to this discussion"?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that works, because I don't even think we'll get it done in two nights. I mean-
Oh, it's not going to get done.
I've listened to reports from the committee that our people were on the rack, or whatever they called it, and they had long meetings, and it just went on and on and on, and at the end, it was one issue that never could be resolved. And, but they put in many hours on a proposed agreement, so it's so important, and it's something we don't want to rush. It's an extremely important agreement.
Do you have any thoughts with what town administrator needs to discuss?
Well, I think it should be on one of their School Committee night meetings, because I think it's going to be difficult for them to get everybody together on another night. We can limit it to an hour each, you know, committee, School Committee meeting, discuss it, because we're not going to get it resolved like Selectwoman Gulat has said in one night, so. And I do believe we need to be patient with this and go over everything, so.
What are their September dates?
If we can ask, what was it, September 11th and 25th?
September 25th.
So, if we can ask that we be one of the earlier agenda items, and-
I'm away September 11th, so I won't be here for that.
And we limit the amount of time.
So, why don't we just suggest September 25th, for, to start?
To start, the opener?
Yeah, the opening salvo, if you will. I, I agree. I think, you know, their, their committee of 10 people from two different towns, and you have three people in the central office who also go to those meetings, plus Celeste, their administrative assistant. So, I think the 25th will work fine with, with our under, explicit understanding that this is going to be to be continued.
Right, we're not going to be solved at that night.
Do you want to be there as well?
Sure. I mean, if I can. I actually am in Boston that day for procurement, but I'll do everything I can to get down here.
No problem. I would just want you to know, you, you can be there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So, I don't think we need a motion.
No, no, no. We're just going to respond.
Well, just contact them and see what-
If the 25th, which they, they proposed both, so, you know, they're kind of waiting for us.
And we're picking the 25th.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, colleagues.
Looking easy.
All right, the, next on the agenda this evening is the request to waive fees for the Dyton Lions Club related to construction of the Bachi Court. And I'll just read this very brief letter from our Building Commissioner, excuse me, from Denise Wilkins to the Building Commissioner. Ms. Wil- Wilkins is the Secretary of the Dyton Lions Association. I'm, Dyton Lions Club, excuse me. "I'm writing you today on behalf of the Dyton Lions to request a waiver of fee for the permit of a proposed Bachi Court to be constructed behind the Lions Pavilion. This court will be available to any town resident to use. We feel that it will be an asset to anyone using the Pavilion, the senior center, or anyone simply wanting to play. Thank you for your consideration of this request and for your continued support of the Dyton Lions." We did receive a response regarding the waiving the permit fee from our Building Commissioner, and he states, "Please see the attached building permit and fee waiver request from the Dyton Lions Club, asking the town to waive the Building Department permit fee related to the construction of the Bachi Court adjacent to the Lions Pavilion. Additionally, the court will be located on town property, requiring a Board of Selectmen signature on the permit application. Please advise on the town's position regarding the waiving of departmental fees." Does anybody have any input?
I'm in agreement with us. I'll make a motion that we waive the Department, the Building Department fees, permit fees for the Dyton Lions Club for the Bachi Court.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion.
That's another hat, Mr. Gary Swearingen.
Bachi master. Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Lions Club.
You're up to four tonight.
It's a lot of hats. You only have one hat, Mr. Ferry.
I tell you, it's got a big office door. Lot of titles.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just wanted to say the Dyton Lions Club does a lot for the town, so I am happy to put my full support behind this. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda, since we already did 8F, is the, a request from Verizon for a license to install overhead slash underground utilities at 1458 Somerset Avenue.
Mr. Chairman-
They sent us some plans as well.
Yep, I move that we grant the request of Verizon, approve them to install overhead slash underground utilities at 1458 Somerset Avenue, the location of the new police communication center.
A second, their motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The motion passes. Next on the agenda, request to designate the position of outside expert appraiser as a special municipal employee position. And we did get this request from Mr. Sansusi. I'm just going to let, let you explain, Madam Administrator. There's like a long letter here.
So, Mr., is it Sansusi? I'm sorry, I've been saying this wrong. He's just requesting special municipal employee designation because he has an apparent conflict. It's not apparent, it's a real conflict, but he's registering as such. The conflict is, he's doing appraisal work, but he does outside work as an appraiser, but that's why we want him doing appraiser work, because he's a, an expert in his field. So, he has, he has taken the conflict of interest tests that all of us must take. He's filing with the town clerk that he's looking for this designation, and he's coming now before you to receive it.
I reviewed the documents. He's up on his conflict of interest law training. I reviewed the documents, he's up on his conflict of interest law training, so I have no issue with this, and I also would want an expert doing appraisal.
I agree.
We've had this gentleman for years, literally.
If there's no further discussion, I'm accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request of Mr. George Sansucci and appoint him, and designate him outside expert appraiser as a special municipal employee as outlined in his conflict of interest statement.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is a discussion of Rehoboth's 375th anniversary.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be put on the agenda, because Rehoboth is celebrating its 375th anniversary, and when I was working on the, with the anniversary committee in 2012 here in Dayton, I remembered that this town received many citations, congratulations from communities, and it was really nice to receive them. We had them all on display out in the foyer, but we needed one of the bulletin boards, but we still have some out there, and so I would like to make a motion that the town of Dayton prepare a citation and recognition of Rehoboth's 375th anniversary, and that as a board, we sign it and send to them, congratulate them and wish them the best, as similar to what we already have, that we have received.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Between Mrs. Brady, who I said, Karen, what do you think? And we went out and looked, and Mrs. Aaronstein, they are eminently qualified to prepare that document.
All right.
They've both said yes already, so.
Without arm twisting?
Right.
We're committed.
So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Last under new business is creation of a ribbon cutting ceremony committee for Old Town Hall, which I actually think is an amazing idea, but I guess my question is, what ribbon are we cutting if it's not done yet?
No, no.
This is, in preparation for it being done.
Oh, okay, do we have a date? That was my next question.
In October, so this, I'll let Selectwoman Gulat take it over, this came from a department head meeting.
I got it, yeah, and I, I got an updated tour of the upstairs of the old New Town Hall, and I was talking to Mr. Agia and said, "We've really got to plan something nice, something special, so the public can come and see this building and see what has been restored, what has been made that's brand new, considering for a relatively small amount to have new office space and meeting space." So, what I said to him was, "It would be nice if we had a committee of, let's say, five or seven individuals, and it can be some town officials, some people from the community, I would certainly ask the town historian to be involved, but have a basic committee that looks at this, works with Mr. Agia to determine a date when this could take place. It would probably be on a Sunday, because it would be weekend and people would be home or available or whatever, and we would also have, if you will, an auxiliary committee who would work to handle details of the day. It would be nice to have refreshments, and my thought was, I'm hoping we would get a very good turnout, because let's say it's a Sunday afternoon, and we set the hours, people could come in and tour the building and up and down and see everything, and weather permitting, we could have a gathering place in the pavilion for refreshments and just general visiting and talking, because my thought is, we want to get as many people as we can to see the building, move through, up and down, and then if they choose to stay, we have the pavilion where they could mingle and talk.
They have to stay.
Exactly. We block the road, Mr. Perry's in charge, blocking the road, but that way, if everybody comes in and stays in the building, then we've got a traffic problem in the building, but if we, as they move out, if they want to have a, whatever, cup of coffee, a cold drink, whatever, whatever the committee plans, we will have an area where they can congregate and talk, and we can move people through the building, because my other thought is, obviously, the building commissioner being there is not going to allow, or the fire chief, a huge...
Over occupancy.
Exactly, but it could be a nice social event, and so that's, that was just an idea that we had about having something. They could establish the date, working with Mr. Agia, when things would be complete, and work out details of, again, the ribbon cutting ceremony, the, I'm thinking of the, it won't be as elaborate as this, but we would invite Representative Hadad, Senator Pacheco. When we had the bridge opening dedication, it obviously won't be that big, but we would have just some introductory, you know, speeches, whatever, brief, short, informal, cut the ribbon, and people can start going through at their leisure, ask questions. The other thing is, in the upstairs meeting room, the hall, the walls are relatively bare, and so one of the things that Mr. Agia said was, maybe people could make suggestions of what could be put on the walls, is, other than the historical things we've found, but that was just some of the, some of the thoughts out there.
I think it's a fantastic idea, I think, especially if the upstairs, more so than the downstairs, downstairs, which is, which is office space, is going to be a community space, so to integrate the community on like the first day that it's opened.
And it's the most historical part, as far as keeping it as close to the way as it was when it was built.
And the Dayton Historical Society has some stuff from the Grange, so maybe we can have some kind of a display.
That would be a good idea.
I've been a Grange member since I was 14, so I won't tell you how many years that is, but I remember going there, we didn't care about the number of people upstairs, it was crowded and everything else, and there's nobody there telling us, you're over the limit, yes, you're over the limit, not air conditioned, but we do have some stuff that we can bring, as well as some photos, maybe some photos that we may have.
I know, I know he's planning a collage, because before they started, I took, I took pictures right up to the point of the carpet being installed, and he said his wife would take care of the pictures after that, so he's got lots of photographs that I took showing the progression of, of the tear down and the buildup, but it would be nice if the Historical Society and maybe other people in town have some memorabilia that they would willing to have displayed, or something along those lines, and, but anyhow.
All right, come accept a motion.
I'll make a motion then that we form a ribbon cutting ceremony committee for the Old Town Hall.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes.
So, we're going to be looking for volunteers for this group, I know I have an interest in being part of this committee.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm willing to serve.
And you're right, Myrna Santos ought to be, also be part of this.
Was that a hand? Okay, sorry.
And I think it was, it looked like...
Everybody freeze.
What's one more hat? What's one more hat?
Right, exactly.
You're probably not going to be doing anything at that time, Tom.
It's going to be directing traffic.
It won't be snowing.
We have culverts to repair.
It'll be a Sunday, you won't be digging up the roads.
So, if you are interested in being part of history, please send us an email, fill out the volunteer application, I know you, it sounds like you both want to, Mrs. Santos, please, you don't have to, we're going to throw your name in the hat, but yeah, please let us know if you want to be part of it.
And the plan is, a basic committee, you think seven's reasonable, or five?
I think five or seven.
Okay, so the basic committee will handle working with Mr. Agia to get dates and things like that. The auxiliary committee that I'm referring to is, we will be looking for volunteers to be here on the actual day, who are willing to help us with, serve refreshments, or the kind of things that you have to do when you have the crowd there, so that will be, you know, additional hands to do whatever, so if you're interested at all in helping us, please either send an email, get in touch with Karen, just let us know what your interest is, so that we can get this together.
Absolutely, and we'll be sure to, that the word gets out via email and on the town website.
I'm going to volunteer the president of the Dayton Historical Society, Christine Pacheco, to also be a member of.
She knows about this?
She knows about it, she knows about it right about now, but I'm sure she'd be pleased to be part of this committee.
Oh, that's good, that's good.
So, is it a committee of five or seven?
Actually, we went with seven.
I think seven might be good.
I think Jim should be part of it also, so.
Okay.
Who, me?
Jen.
Oh, I thought you said chairman, okay.
So, we have seven spots, okay.
So, we still have to fill about three.
Three.
Yeah, so we're looking...
Okay.
Plus, and then for auxiliary people, we'll see who turns up.
But that can also be a role of a committee member, to amass volunteers for day of and shifts, day and, I don't know how long this is going to be, but day and evening.
Yeah, but I'm thinking if it's a Sunday afternoon, and, you know, we set the hours, I think we'll have a good turnout.
If anyone has any giant scissors, we can get like a big, or giant ribbon.
In the Grange, when it was active, used to have plays, I would go and put on a play.
They had that stick.
We could come up with a play, maybe.
Absolutely.
No.
I think our meetings here are enough. All right, moving on to correspondence.
Oh, wait a minute.
Actually, item K is on there.
Oh, I'm sorry, see, Karen gave me the insider knowledge, and I didn't pass it on. I think, believe we already did this, we already acted on...
We're so efficient, we're trying to do it twice.
8K, we do things twice.
7007 CETA?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We voted to, that we're not interested?
Deny the first writ of refusal.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to do anything on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have any correspondence?
We can go on that.
Okay, all right. Announcements, first, I wanted to briefly, and I will, this will be posted, you will see it, a press release regarding the fact that West Nile virus was confirmed in mosquitoes from Dayton, Massachusetts, this is dated yesterday, August 21st, the, and it's from the Board of Health. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health announced today that West Nile virus, WNV, has been detected in mosquitoes collected from Dayton, Massachusetts. WNV is most commonly transmitted to humans by the bite of a mosquito infected with the virus. While WNV can infect people of all ages, people over the age of 50 are at higher risk for severe infection. By taking a few common sense precautions, people can help to protect themselves and their loved ones. Avoiding mosquito bites, point one, be aware of peak mosquito hours. The hours from dusk to dawn are peak biting times for many mosquitoes. Consider rescheduling outdoor activities that occur during evening or early morning. Otherwise, take extra care to use repellent and protective clothing. Two, clothing can help reduce mosquito bites, although it may be difficult to do when it's hot, wearing long sleeves, long pants, and socks when outdoors will help keep mosquitoes away from your skin. Three, apply insect repellent when you go outdoors. Use a repellent with DEET, N-N-Diethyl-Methyloamide, permethrin, picariden, KBR 3023, IR 3535, or Oil of Lemon Eucalyptus, commonly known as PMethane 38-Diol, PMD, according to the instructions on the product label. DEET products should not be used on infants under two months of age and should be used in concentrations of 30% or less on older children. Oil of Lemon Eucalyptus should not be used on children under three years of age. Permethrin products are intended for use on items such as clothing, shoes, bed nets, and camping gear, and should not be applied to skin. Mosquito proof your home. One, drain standing water. Mosquitoes lay their eggs in standing water. Limit the number of places around your home for mosquitoes to breed by either draining or getting rid of items that hold water. Check rain gutters and drains. Empty any unused flower pots and wading pools, and change water in bird baths frequently. Two, install or repair screens. Some mosquitoes like to come indoors. Keep them outside by having tightly fitting screens on all your windows and doors. While Dayton continues to work closely with the MDPH, Mass. Department of Public Health, and other agencies, locally, the Dayton Board of Health will be distributing fact sheets that will be located at the Town Hall and also on the town website. More information about West Nile virus and reports of WNV activity in Massachusetts can be found on the Massachusetts Department of Public Health website, which is www.mass.gov/dph/wnv, a lot of acronyms there. Recorded information about WNV is also available by calling the MDPH Public Health Information Line at 866-MASS-WNV, and that's 866-627-7968, and thank you to the Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add that on Channel 10 tonight, at six o'clock news, they announced that Tividan, Providence, and I think it was either Warren or Bristol have all tested positive, so if you're visiting those areas, be aware.
In case anybody missed what you read, Mr. Chairman, that will be posted on our website.
Absolutely, thank you. Psychic fair.
You want me to read it?
Absolutely, thank you.
Just so everybody knows, I'm a member of the Dayton Historical Society, I'm an officer, all our officers do not get paid, so there's no money that is coming to me, so I want to make everybody aware of that, but a psychic fair will be held on Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Taunton Yacht Club, 2125 Water Street, Dayton, Mass. Readings at $20 for 20 minutes, vendors available, selling their goods. For questions or to reserve a vendor table, call Patty at 508-436-3105, and this is sponsored by the Dayton Historical Society. The Dayton Historical Society also presents The Native American Nature Tales with Diane Edcomb, Sunday, September 23rd, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. at the Friendship Hall at the Dayton Community Church, 2056 Elm Street in Dayton, Mass. Join the members of the Dayton Historical Society at this free, family-friendly event. Diane Edcomb will explore tribal myths and legends of the animals and birds of North America. Ranging from the Umerus to the Houghtfelt, these stories celebrate native culture, and it strikes strong links to the natural world. This program is supported by a grant from the Dayton Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council.
Thank you, Selectman Pacheco. We also have some community events that are going to be hosted by the Friends of the Dayton Public Library. The first is Taste of Dayton, we love that annual event, that will be Monday, September 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Dayton Pavilion behind Town Hall. Thank you for allowing me to change my work hours, so I can get out of work early for that. Love a reason. For more information, contact the library at 508-669-6421. We also have the Papaginos fundraiser to benefit the Friends of the Dayton Public Library, that will be on Wednesday, August 29th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Papaginos, which is located at 294 Winthrop Street, Taunton, Massachusetts, 02780. Next is the Create Your Family Legacy, the basics of archival storage, that will be held on Wednesday, September 5th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Dayton Public Library. They will also have a Create Your Family Legacy Digital Preservation on Wednesday, September 12th, 6:30 p.m. at the Dayton Public Library. There will be a Create Your Family Legacy for Organizing Your Materials on Thursday, September 20th, 6:30 p.m. at the Dayton Public Library, and last but not least, Create Your Family Legacy Storytelling, probably the one I will be going to, that will be held on Thursday, September 27th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Dayton Public Library. In addition, the Dayton Fire Association's Second Annual Touch a Truck Event will be held Saturday, September 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the grounds of Mannheim, New England, which is located at 123 William Street, North Dayton, Massachusetts. The 40B Committee is looking for two at-large members still, and as you know from our previous discussion here this evening, the... the Open Space Committee has a vacancy, as does the Land Use Committee. And we also have a prime time announcement. Bear with me just a moment here.
That's actually just your regular announcement that you read, Selectmen Zagroff. Anyone interested to?
Oh, oh, oh my God. Okay. No, yes.
Normal lingo about prime time.
Okay, yes. If you know anyone over, you know, sixty years or older who is, thank you. Oh my God, I totally was not getting the memo.
I keep you on point. That's my job.
Thank you.
Just because you're only twenty-six, you know.
I do tell people that. If you want to remain healthy in your mind, body, and soul, please look into prime time. We send this information out via email every week. We make an announcement here. Sheila New, the program manager, and Alice Souza, the executive director, would love to hear from you. So if you're interested, don't hesitate to contact either prime time. You can also contact our friends at the Council on Aging as well. And at this time, I would like to yield the floor to Selectmen Gulat for Selectmen's Reports.
Okay, I attended the City of Taunton and Greater Attleboro Taunton, excuse me, Home Consortium. This is the group that I've mentioned, that I've reported on several times about having funding available for first-time home buyers. And that program is active, and there are some, there were flyers out on the table. So if you're a first-time home buyer, please check into this. The meeting dealt with a presentation from Diane Glaber and Thomas Silverstein, who are lawyers for the Committee for Civil Rights Under the Law, and it dealt with fair housing. These, this organization of lawyers provides technical assistance to HUD, Housing and Urban Development. And they are going to be conducting, in the Attleboro Taunton Consortium and all of the communities involved, which includes the town of Dayton, an analysis of impediments. And what this relates to is, they will look at things that cause impediments to people who are trying to rent or buy homes. The, quite frankly, I, being from a small community, I think I was the smallest community there because the only other community who would have been sort of like Dayton was Carver, and they are, population-wise, bigger than us. But they are a, they're not a big industrial community. They have a lot of cranberry bogs and which would be like open space slash farmland. Some of the impediments that they talked about, like discrimination relative to ethnic background or religion or things like that, I don't think small communities run into that. We don't have, thank goodness, homeless people on the street. A lot of what they're looking at, I think, will apply to the cities of Taunton and Attleboro. However, they are going to hold and have visits in the communities involved in the consortium to get public input. They want in, they want to have, we were, this was called a focus group meeting in August. They want to prepare a draft analysis of impediments in September and October. They want to have public comment and period, period for public comment and hearings. And November revisions on the comments, final version to the city council in Taunton. And in January, they want to submit this to HUD. When they were talking about public meetings, what I said to them was, it would probably be good if you're planning to come to Dayton, that you invite maybe Berkeley and Freetown because they're also small communities. And quite frankly, we don't, as communities, deal with some of the impediments that the cities run into. They looked at areas that dealt with school, number of school lunch, and obviously, we have children who are in the school lunch program. So that would be, income might be an impediment. And I explained to them, communities like us, Berkeley, Dayton, Freetown, we don't have a lot of rental housing either. We've had developments. We've had developers talk about having rental housing, but those have not materialized. And that, then they got into transportation. And I said, well, I can tell you that I and another member of the Board of Selectmen have attended meetings on South Coast Rail. And we supported the route through the swamp, the most direct route, which is not being considered. And we could, personally, it's an impediment for people in the area because that would open up jobs in Boston. And so if we're going to talk about transportation, that South Coast Rail thing is really important. That set off a whole discussion because we had the planner from Middleborough who is brand new. They're not overwhelmed at that right-hand detour. And of course, there was somebody there from Taunton who said Taunton's being left out of this whole thing. So we will be contacted about setting up some kind of a meeting. I really don't know what kind of a public response we would get simply because the kinds of things that they have to follow up on, for the most part, don't exist in our communities. But just to give you a heads up, this was something completely different from what we normally have. We normally discuss budgets and how many projects and where they are and things like that. So this is something that's coming down the pike, and the topic is what each community in the consortium is doing to deal with fair housing issues. So.
I do think one thing, I totally agree with everything you said. However, we may not have a large population of what some may consider lower-income individuals in town, but we do have an older aging population who might be living on a fixed income, who, that might be an impediment for them.
I mentioned, yes, and I said, one of the things we've talked about, a housing need in Dayton, we would like to see another Lincoln Village, which is rent-controlled, but there is a need for another or an expansion because there's always a waiting list. But there's another group of people, like me, who don't want to leave Dayton, but you know, quite frankly, if we had an over fifty-five development, that I'd sell my home, I would go into that development, I wouldn't have to maintain the lawn and all that other stuff, but I could still live in town because there are people who have moved out of town because we don't have that to offer. And I said, we've discussed it with developers over a period of time. And some said, well, yeah, we'd look at that. But I said, that's another thing that hasn't materialized. So they did say that, they talked about housing segregation and discrimination. I don't think we deal with that in Dayton. I mean, I own rental property for, what, twenty-some years? And the thing was, I never even had to advertise because if I had a vacancy, the person moving out told the next couple, you know, so we didn't deal with that. But they'll be looking at all these things, prioritize public investment in transit, quality schools, parks, and other amenities. And I said to them, we are working on work at us, expanding our schools because we need space without even more development. We need space. And as far as parks and things like that, when a developer is coming in, we have boards that make sure that in a development, there is open space, recreational space, or trails, or parks and things like that. And some, if they're big enough, will have playgrounds. So we have addressed those kinds of issues, not because we considered them an impediment, but because we felt those were important to have. So. So when I get the word that we're going to have a visitor or something, I'll get the word out, but other than that.
Thank you.
Regarding your comment about the fifty-five and older, I've talked to developers. We had two forty Bs that were fifty-five and older. They came back to us because they couldn't sell those houses, and we had to change it. So it doesn't seem like, at least up north anyway, there's a big market for that. They are in the area, I think in Middleborough, maybe.
And Carver, because the gentleman, Mr. Cole, said that he's a longtime, he was born in Carver or was a resident, left, came back, and so now he's into this. And he's the rep to this consortium. And he said that the other thing that they found in his community is resistance to change. There is buildable land, but they don't, the people that own it don't want to sell it because they don't want the town to boom. And the biggest landowner is Makepeace, which owns the bogs. But they own other land, but they're not looking to develop it for building and things like that. So it's a community, that's a tight community, but they don't want a lot of changes. They have fears like everyone. A lot of new homes means a lot of children in their schools are also. And they were part of the Plymouth-Carver Regional District, and they're one of the few that actually dissolved and went on their own again. Because it got to the point Plymouth was just too big, and with the power plant, financially, they weren't compatible. But anyhow, it was interesting to hear him talk because he said a lot of what Selectman Gulat described. I can say ditto for our town, you know, so anyhow, that was the latest on that.
Thank you for keeping us abreast on that.
I just want to mention that the forty B committee that I'm representing the board on has a meeting on September fifth at five o'clock, and we're going to be working on a housing production plan. Right now, we have a housing production plan. It's our second one that's been developed. It expires, I believe, in December of this year. So we're going to be, begin the process of updating it and renewing it and get the funding for that. So we'll be doing that on September fifth.
When they asked us if we were proactive, and I said, I think we're very proactive because we did initially file a housing plan. There's a committee working on the updated one that's coming due. And, you know, all of the things that are relevant to our town are in that plan. So I said, so I don't know, maybe we're a step ahead, but yes, we have a housing plan.
All right, moving on.
Also want to announce that I'll be having office hours here on Mondays, ten to twelve. Please call before you come down and make sure that I'm going to be here. And I'm also going to meet with you on appointments. If you call me or the office and schedule an appointment, I'll meet with the people. But I'll be here on, starting this coming Monday, ten to twelve.
Okay. Onto acknowledgements. Selectman Gulat.
Mr. Chairman, we have several donations that I would make a motion that we acknowledge. The first one is a bereavement donation to prime time in memory of Alice Lima, from the Lima family, in the total amount of five hundred and eighty dollars. The second one is an anonymous donation to prime time in the amount of thirty dollars. And the third one is an anonymous donation to prime time in the amount of thirty dollars. So my motion is to acknowledge those three donations.
I'll second that motion.
We have motion and a second discussion.
I would just like that if we could send a thank you notice, or unless the Council on Aging already did, but a thank you note to the Lima family.
Absolutely.
Would the board like to send that from the three of you?
And I'll add that to the motion, that we, the board send a letter to the Lima family thanking them for this donation.
Stand by your second.
Yes, I do.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Minutes.
Karen was busy.
Yeah, I know. I think we can just do these as a block and just point out, because they're all except for review, and then just point out the dates. So accepting motions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the following minutes for review. Selectmen's Regular Meeting, May sixteenth. Selectmen's Regular Meeting, May thirtieth. Selectmen's Regular Meeting, August first, and Selectmen's Regular Meeting, August the eighth.
Now, am I able to second this considering that I wasn't a select person at the May sixteenth?
Sure, you're just accepting these for review.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I think to your point, it would be wise to maybe abstain from approving them. But I think at least one of these, you were actually present.
That was, yes.
For two of them, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Approval of the warrants, Selectman Gulat.
Oh, Mr. Pacheco's going to do the first three.
Well, I am.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Just assigned to him.
Curveball.
I'll make a motion.
He made the mistake of asking me what the numbers were.
Oh.
The letters, too. What the letters, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant seven A dash nineteen in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. I do them all together? I'll prove them? And also warrant number seven B dash nineteen in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents, and warrant number seven C dash nineteen in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
When you see that one with the comma, it's like, am I reading this correctly?
Did they, can they move the comma over to the? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant eight A nineteen in the amount of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents payroll. Warrant eight B dash nineteen in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, forty-three cents. And warrant eight C dash nineteen in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, sixty-one cents. The last two being counts payable, be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Any public input? All right. So as chairman, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Exception ten, to discuss trade secrets or confidential or proprietary information regarding activities by a governmental body as energy supplier, municipal aggregator, or energy cooperative. If an open session will adversely affect conducting business relative to other entities making, selling, or distributing energy, open session will not reconvene.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Everyone, thank you so much. Cable, that's it. This is the end of the road. I think this was good.
I'm very impressed.
This was a long agenda.